Where you are, Mr. Chair?
Okay, thanks, Leslie. So we'll call the meeting to order. Just before we start, I'd like to go through some comments that we've developed over time here for these virtual meetings. In previous virtual MPC meetings, we've experienced a few connectivity problems that caused participants to leave the meeting briefly and then log back in, but there were no major problems and we successfully completed the agenda. It's important that we consider all discussion points and verbal information in order to make the best decisions, and it may take more time in this format to ensure all the comments are heard and understood. We'll ask all participants to be patient as we work through any technology interruptions that we might experience. There are a number of protocols that we've put into place for these virtual meetings. First, no new written material will be accepted at the meeting. Applicants will be able to present verbally, but no documents will be accepted that were not previously submitted. You will take short breaks at appropriate times over the course of a meeting and potentially a 30-minute lunch break. During the break, a sign will be displayed on your screen saying that we are on a break and how long that break will be. All participants are asked to keep their microphones muted until they're ready to speak. When an applicant joins the meeting, I'll explain the meeting procedure, ask them to mute their microphone, and leave the meeting after the application has been reviewed. In the event a participant loses their internet or their connection degrades so that they can't be heard, can't hear or be heard, they will leave the meeting and then rejoin. When that happens, we may take a short break or at least stop further discussion of the agenda until that participant is back. If after five minutes they haven't rejoined, we will have it, and we still have a quorum of three members, we will continue the discussion. If a participant rejoins after the discussion has resumed, we will bring them up to date and carry on. If the participant is an MPC member and we judge that too much information has been discussed in the interim or that we're in the process of voting, that member will be asked to abstain from the vote. Loss of video does not require the participant to leave the meeting. As long as participants can hear and be heard, they will be actively participating in the meeting. In the event that I, as a chair, lose my connection and can't rejoin, Lynn Ralston will assume the chair so that as long as we have a quorum of three members, the meeting can continue without further delay. We'll use our normal meeting procedure where the staff member will review the application and the staff recommendation. Commissioners will ask questions of staff. Commissioners will engage the applicants and the applicant will have an opportunity to speak to their application. When questions and discussion begin, all participants are asked to use the raise hand function in Teams, and I'll do my best to acknowledge the raised hands in the order that they are raised. I ask participants not to bring up any new points of discussion until I acknowledge that there is no further discussion on the current point. Before asking for a vote, I'll ask the applicant if they feel they've been heard and if the position has been fairly represented to the MPC. Once all discussion is complete, I'll ask for a motion and respond to the first raised hand that I see. To ensure that the meeting minutes are accurate and there's no confusion about the vote, we will use a roll call during the vote. I'll call for the vote in the same order each time. First Paul Clark, then Lynn Ralston, Kevin Heb, Paul Ryan, and I will vote last. I will refer to the motion at the start of the roll call and ask the question, "Are you in favor of the motion?" And I ask that you answer either yes or no. At the end of the roll call, I'll state whether the motion was passed or refused and check with Katie that she heard all the votes. So hopefully that's clear. We'll move ahead then on the agenda. And the first item is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Anyone? So we had no changes. Could we have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
There we go. Thanks, Paul. So to approve the agenda for September 16th for today, Paul Clark, are you in favor of the motion?
Yes, I am.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Paul Ryan?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so motion's carried. Katie, you heard all that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Good, thank you. So then let's move to... I think this is supposed to be the approval of the minutes of the August meeting. Were there any changes, any comments on the minute? Lynn, you want to...
No comments. I was just going to recommend we approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Paul Clark, are you in favor?
Yes, yes.
And Lynn?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yes.
Paul Ryan?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so motion's carried. Katie, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, so now, did did the applicant score four one? The autos join the meeting?
This is Leslie Ray. No, they have not.
They have not? Okay. So we suggest then let's go ahead to item 5-1 and we'll deal with, well, actually, 5-2. And then we can let Mr. Freeman on his way. We'll go to 5-2. And Jan, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. As the chairman mentioned, Mr. Freeman is in attendance today. He's the agent for the landowners Catherine and Doug Standing. The landowners have authorized Mr. Freeman to make the application on their behalf, and there is a letter in your agenda package evidencing this. The subject property is located at 107 Rivers Bend Way in Dead Man's Flats, and the application is for a new single detached dwelling for the creation of a two-bedroom secondary suite on the main level of the home and for a height variance. The portion of the roof where the height variance is needed is at the front of the property, and there's renderings in your agenda package to show this. The property is designated as R1S. Dwellings are listed as permitted uses in this district, but the suite and the height variance are discretionary, so the application has been referred to MPC. The drawings for the dwelling and the suite are contained within your agenda package and are shown to comply with the setbacks. These drawings will also be used to form part of a Schedule A to any decision that you might make today. There's also a site plan attached, and that shows the layout of the site. And this site plan will form a Schedule B to any decision that you make today. You might notice that this plan also has been stamped by the operations department. They have reviewed it in terms of the driveway approach and the sizes, so it's also part of Schedule B. The Landuse Bylaw allows for a suite to be developed at the same time as the dwelling is being constructed, provided the requirements of Section 4.16 of the Landuse Bylaw are met. And as an example, a statutory declaration is required to be sworn that evidences that the landowners reside at the subject property full-time. And within your agenda package, there is a declaration that has been sworn which outlines that the owners will reside full-time at the property once the house is built and they have an occupancy approval permit to occupy it. The Landuse Bylaw allows for a suite to be approved just for a one-year period in the beginning, and then that suite can be renewed for increments of up to three years after that. The staff recommendation outlines a date that the suite would be deemed to be complete so that it could begin operating for that one-year period. The staff recommendation outlines that date. The Landuse Bylaw also outlines the size that a suite may be within a home, and in short, the regulations outline that a suite may not exceed 40% of the dwelling's size or 861 square feet, whichever is less. At a size of 840 square feet, the size of the suite complies with the Landuse Bylaw. The suite layout is, pardon me, is laid out on a plan in your agenda package, and that plan would form a Schedule C to any decision that you make today. Two additional onsite parking requirements are required for the stall, or I mean for the suite, and two are required for the dwelling. There's a parking plan submitted within your agenda material that shows four onsite parking stalls are being provided as required. That parking plan that you see in your agenda package would form a Schedule D to any decision that you make today. The height variance that's required for the dwelling is near the front of the roof line. The maximum height that's allowable in an R1 district for a dwelling is 10 meters. The proposed dwelling is shown to be at a height of 10.77 meters. This works out to be an approximate 8% variance, and the distance of the height, I guess, is 0.77 meters above the 10. Section 41.3.3A of our Landuse Bylaw outlines that MPC does have the ability to grant up to a 10% variance should it wish to do that. MPC must feel that the granting of the variance would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or the quiet enjoyment of the neighboring properties. And in that regard, four adjacent landowners were notified of the suite, well, I guess the dwelling, the suite, and the height variance. And one response was received to that referral, and that is in your agenda package. The staff's recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the background report. And I will stop there and answer any questions.
Thanks, Jan. Any questions for Jan?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
General question. Jan, in terms of height variances, if my memory serves me right, almost every one we get now for Dead Man's Flats wants a variance to the height.
There's several, yes. There are some that aren't, but yes, there many are.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed that both this application and the one that precedes it, we haven't looked at yet. The properties were, and it seemed that if the property was flat, they probably wouldn't have had to have a variance. You're muted, Jan.
I'm going to ask...
Yes, they're both sloped properties, front to back.
I was going to ask the actual...
Kevin, you had your hand up? Sorry, Paul, Kevin has his hand up here. Kevin?
Yes, I just had to turn my mute off. I noticed in point number 12 that it says Schedule D, and in the drawings, there is no Schedule D. The one that I suspect should be labeled D is labeled C.
That's possible. Schedule D is the parking plan.
Yes, and it's got a C at the top of that page.
Is it now? Okay, we can correct that. I just have to sort of locate the page of that.
Third last, I think, of the...
Sorry for the delay. In any case, if any of the schedules have been incorrectly labeled, like just a typo, we will fix that. So I'll make a note that Schedule D is labeled as Schedule C.
And Schedule C actually has the two pages labeled as C, and I think one of them should be D and the other one should remain C. Yeah, minor point, but if you're just trying to flip to it, it makes it easier if it's got the correct label.
Yeah, of course. I'll just make a little note of that to fix the schedules.
That's all I wanted at this time.
Thanks, Kevin. Paul Ryan?
Yeah, no, I was actually going to wait for the owner's representative to find out, but I think you may have given him his answer, but I'm just a little bit concerned that almost every application we're getting now, they are designing them over the MD's maximum height.
Okay, well, let's wait a second.
We'll wait.
Put that question, Jan. Yes, Mr. Freeman? I had Jan looking at the letter that was sent to the neighbors, and it only refers to the secondary suite. There's no reference to the height variance.
Yes.
It's on page 88.
Yeah, I noticed that, actually. Maybe the applicant could speak to that. It was them that sent out the notification.
All right, thank you. So before we go to Mr. Freeman, any other questions for Jan?
No, I don't have any questions for Jan, and I will double-check on the letter that was sent to all the neighbors for the height variance as well as the secondary suite. Due to the fact that I myself am in Arundre, I had the registered builder Bobby Richardson, who's also a resident of Rivers Bend, help me with issuing the letter, and I will double-check that everybody is aware of the height variance as well. To Mr. Ryan's question, and it is true, there are a lot of the homes out there that are asking for height variances within the valley. I've done upwards of 20 homes out in Rivers Bend. I'd say I've done about eight of them that require a height variance. A lot of it is due to some of the low slope. This one was particular to the homeowners really wanting their master bedroom on the highest level to encapsulate some views. Obviously, out in the valley, that's what everybody wants to see. In doing so, I warned them that this would come up, a height variance. What I did try to do is keep that roof mass to the center of the home and as low as, you know, keep not only under a 10% variance, but also only 10% of the total roof area asks for that variance. It's not the whole roof. It's just a small portion of the roof asking for that. I think it's around 6.9% of the overall roof area is asking for the variance. This was also done to mitigate any impact it might have on the neighboring lots, keeping it in the center so light shed down the sides. Any of that kind of stuff used from anyone else's side yards would not be dramatically impacted by this height variance. Thank you.
Terry, can I just ask one more?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted, yeah, just want a little clarification from Jan on some items. I think we've been consistent in other apps, but I want to be sure. Your point 37 and 39 talk a little bit about how this is only for long-term rentals, and the permit is from the end of next year till '22. And at that time, he either extends it as a long-term rental or he has to apply for something else, right?
That's right.
And they're fully aware of that?
Yes, they've applied for a secondary suite, not a visitor or a comm, and they're aware that there is a waiting list, so they can operate. This is a short term.
Good. Just wanted to be sure that was clear. Thanks.
Okay.
You mean this is a long term? You said this is a short term, Jan, but did you mean that this is a long term?
It cannot be operated as a short term, and yes, it is a long-term rental for sure. Secondary suites are only long-term.
Okay, thank you. And speaking to that, Mr. Freeman, the date that completion date that we're showing in the staff recommendation is September 30th, 2021. Are you okay with that date?
Yes. Jan and I had a discussion on that date. We may be completed sooner, but with the homeowner moving in and wanting to do some of the work themselves, it probably will take a little longer to get the house finished. So I think September, the end of September in 2021 is an acceptable time for that to start.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Mr. Freeman, anything else that you'd like to bring up?
No, I was here to answer any questions the council may have, and it's... So, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion, you have a motion?
Just a moment, Terry. Is anybody else concerned about the height variance not being mentioned in the letter to the neighbors? It's not a major point with me, but I am a bit concerned that the neighbors may not know about that aspect of the application.
Unless they all got height variances themselves.
Yes, yeah. And if nobody else is concerned, my question is answered. I'm not concerned. I'm not going to make an issue out of it.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. My own view on that was because it's such a, I mean, it's high, but it's only a portion of the house. I wasn't particularly concerned about it.
Yes, and that definitely mitigates the concern for me as well, that it's only partial. And as Paul pointed out, it's happening, and a high percentage of the houses there. So I'm happy with it. I just wanted it brought out clearly to see if anybody else had a concern. I'm okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Terry, I think Murray wants, he's got his hand up.
Thank you. Murray, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just to help clarify that, at least the two of the homeowners directly next door and one of the properties across the street, which is actually in for its own development permit, definitely are aware of the height variance due to I designed both of their homes, and I've been in discussions with those homeowners for that. So the other two are permanent residents out there and have talked to some of the neighbors. So I'm hoping everybody is... So I'm hoping everybody is perfectly clear on that, and I'm, uh, sorry, it was a little unclear in the letter.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any other discussion? Kevin?
Uh, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the MD staff development officer.
Okay, thank you. So this is, uh, this is a motion for, for the staff recommendation. Paul Clark, do you approve of the motion?
I approve.
And Lynn?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yes.
Paul Ryan?
Yes.
And I approve, yes. So the motion's carried. Uh, Katie, did you catch that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, thanks very much, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you all for your time.
All right. Okay, so, uh, we'll go back to the, uh, to the original agenda, um, order, and back to, uh, four-one. That's the Seattle application that you guys discussed last.
Right.
So Jan?
Did they join in, Mr. Chair?
Sorry?
Are they present?
Uh, it doesn't look like they're there yet. Leslie?
No, no one else has joined.
Okay, thank you. So again, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, maybe the applicants had some technical difficulties. I, I don't know. They were invited, they said they were going to attend. Uh, but in any case, I think we could still proceed. As MPC is aware, this application was previously tabled, uh, by members at their last meeting, and you had tabled the application pending receipt of detailed engineered drawings on the proposal because the original hand-drawn ones submitted just weren't clear, um, to the members. So we now have these new drawings. Uh, they are in your agenda package. So I'm, I'm assuming you've had a look at them and reviewed them. MPC will need to decide if these revised drawings are acceptable and meet, um, your requirements. As part of the review today, MPC will also need to determine if the upper front deck is considered to be a rooftop type. And, uh, the reason why we're asking MPC to, uh, make that, um, determination is because Section 3.8 of the Land Use Biola outlines special requirements for rooftop decks. So if this is considered to be one, there's some, um, special considerations to look at. Um, and what I mean by that is, um, in Section Eight, or 3.8, I'm sorry, uh, decks are, uh, may be required to be stepped back from the front facade. This is typically for privacy reasons. The rooftop deck is also, um, to be a minimum of 2.5 meters away from any property line, and, uh, these rooftop decks may require screening. And, uh, rooftop decks are considered to be discretionary, so, um, administration wouldn't be able to make a decision on, on a rooftop deck. The revised site plan that was submitted with the drawings shows that the deck is actually 2.94 meters from the side, uh, which is about 9.6 feet. So the current location of this upper deck uh, is, uh, in compliance with, with the, uh, the, uh, side yard setback. The revised site plan also shows, um, what that setback is, and, and members were wondering about this, what the distance is from the new stairs to the upper deck, what they are to the front property line. So that revised site plan that, uh, you have shows that the front yard setback is 5.63 meters, or about 18 feet to the stairs from the front. So, um, that setback, uh, would appear to be, uh, being met. With respect to the application, the neighbors were notified, um, and no responses were received, no uh, negative responses or positive responses. If, um, MPC is considering that this upper deck might be a rooftop deck, you may need to change the wording in your staff recommendation, um, depending on whether the deck is considered to be a rooftop type or not. So the recommendation in my report alludes to this, um, and just needs to be final prior to a motion. The recommendation may also need to be amended if, if not all aspects of the application are approved. So, um, if MPC wants to approve some elements but not approve others, then we'll need to amend the staff recommendation as well. And, uh, lastly, the staff recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the report. And I can stop there and answer any questions.
Thanks, Jan. Uh, so discussion?
Terry, I have one question for Jan. Um, so we didn't have any responses from the neighbors last month. Has there been any update since then?
Nothing.
Nothing at all?
No, no new, no new responses or any responses.
Okay.
Paul Clark? Paul, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just, thank you, uh, Terry. Uh, on page, uh, well, I, it's two of six on Schedule A. Uh, it still refers to a, um, four-deck post with a ladder on the left side and a front door on the right side. And I think that information has been superseded by a staircase. But that's still in the, the information that is in the application. See where I am? Jan?
Um, I'm, I think you're talking about the new drawings that we received, the two new pages?
I'm, I'm just talking about, uh, something that was, uh, um, sent on July ninth. And, uh, it still refers to a ladder on the left side.
Um, of the old drawings, maybe. Um, the new drawings?
Yeah, no, that's exactly right, yeah. It's been superseded.
Right.
But this, uh, information is still in the package.
The old drawings?
No, the, uh, the reference to the ladder.
In the staff recommendation?
I'm not seeing that, Paul.
Can you point us to the page, Paul?
Uh, I wish I could. There's, uh, two page numbers. One is page twenty and one is page, uh, six sixty-three. And there's another page number, one. Uh, sorry, it's, uh.
So this is, this is an email from, uh,
That's where I get an email, yeah, yeah.
The notification that was sent out does refer to the old drawings, you're right. When they affected that notification, they used their hand-drawn drawings for that referral. That's on page twenty-seven, it says on the bottom. Um, and they did use your, the old drawings, you're right, Paul, uh, in the referral notification. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks, Jan.
So a question of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, so Jan, uh, if this is approved, it's approved with the drawings that are presented to us with the application, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And so in, when I'm looking at, uh, Schedule A oh-one, um, which I can't see a page number, on page, uh, twenty-one, I think, of his submission, uh, it does not show a ladder in any of those drawings. It actually now shows a staircase.
Mm-hmm.
So they would not be able to just not have a staircase and put in a ladder?
That is right. No, they cannot. They must do it, if you approve it today, subject to these drawings, they must do the stairs. They cannot do a ladder.
Thank you.
So, uh, just a question here.
Thanks, Paul. Excuse me. No, it, uh, it's just, uh, that, um, um, Paul is correct, and I, I was aware of that, but all I was suggesting is the page before that, uh, that drawing in our package, it still refers to a ladder on the left side. It hasn't been updated.
Okay, I'm just looking for that, um, page, Paul, so that, um, I can see what you're referring to.
Jan?
Yes?
Um, it's page twenty, and it's the written description that was originally sent from the landowners. It's, um, just, uh, Donna's, like, written description of what they're proposing to do. It still refers to a ladder. So it's not the notification that was sent out, it was just their written description.
Okay, and I see that, um, Paul, is that page two of six of Schedule A? Is that the labeling that's on the page you're referring to?
Uh, this is, this is not a, uh, it's obviously, um, um, you're having trouble finding this email, uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm satisfied that, uh, with, uh, with what you responded to with, uh, um, with the stairs, uh, with Counselor Ryan's question, um, that, that a ladder is no longer in the, um,
Part of the proposal.
And part of the proposal, right.
Um, would, would it be, um, more, um, comforting, I guess, if, if you added a condition to the staff recommendation that specifically says, um, that a ladder shall not be utilized as access to the upper deck? Uh, 'cause certainly you could add a condition to make it clear, 'cause you are right in the, um, and, and Katie, um, drew my attention to this. It does say in her cover letter that they're doing stair or a ladder. So if you want, we could put a condition saying that a ladder is not allowed. Um, or we can remove her cover letter, um, that was sent before the revised drawing and just remove it where she talks about that.
Uh, that would be fine with me if you just removed it from the package.
Okay, I, I, all right, I'll remove page two.
Uh, we could make the statement that we are approving what's in the new engineered drawings and not what was in the previous package.
Mm-hmm, and I can check what the wording says right now in the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I've seen similar situations in the past where there was, uh, contradictions in the package. So, um, I think the simplest solution here is to just put a condition in that says a ladder cannot be used. And then that way, uh, in the future, they can come back and say, well, we, we actually put it in the cover letter. You just didn't include it. Um, and so, you know, uh, you can have a small gap in an approval and someone will drive a tractor trailer through it. So I think just making it very clear in the conditions that a ladder cannot be used will take away that for the future.
All right, would you like me to draft, um, a condition quickly here?
Yes, please, Jan.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, um, I'm not sure where you would like this to go, but my suggestion would be either as a, um, new number two or three to the staff recommendation. And, uh, what I've got, uh, drafted is a ladder shall not be used for access to the upper front deck, but rather the stairs as shown in the, uh, submitted drawings.
Okay, well, the wording sounds fine to me. Um, you're suggesting a new number two, or, or inserting it before number two now?
Correct, before, either right after number one, because it outlines what the approval is for in staff recommendation number one, and then number two could be, you know, the, the new clause.
Renumbered, okay.
New number two and renumber, yeah.
Jan, I don't know if this has come up before or not, uh, but, uh, um, one of the concerns that people have, uh, and I suggest that it may not be a concern in this case, is that, uh, when you've got, um, uh, higher elevation decks, uh, it can interfere with the privacy of the people next door. They can look into the windows, uh, so, and that hasn't been brought up?
It is.
Well, yes, it has been brought up, um, for consideration, um, of, of yours while you're looking at this application. So we're, we're saying if you consider it to be a rooftop deck, then you can require a privacy screening because it's a, considered to be discretionary.
So I have some comments on that, Mr. Chair, because I can see, I'm, uh, I was around when some of these were built as rooftop decks, uh, and became, uh, only evident to the neighbors when they actually saw it completed, at which point they were unhappy. And one was an appeal, one ended up with an appeal. Uh, and another one ended up with some very angry neighbors and a lot of letters. So, and I, and I know administration's already asked us to consider this, and the way I look at this is that this is a single-story building. If it was a two-story building, which is allowed there, then they, from the second story, would have the same, uh, view as from that deck. Uh, but the deck does not sit on a roof. It sits on some pylons, some posts. And so if that area underneath was to be closed in, then it would be a rooftop deck. But because it's not closed in, it's a raised deck. So, uh, in the future, someone may say, well, you know, that's really wasted storage space under that deck, we should close it in. Uh, at which point it would become a rooftop deck, uh, after the deck is constructed. So my sense is, is that we should have a condition in there that says that the area under the front deck shall not be closed in without separate approval from the MPC. In other words, it can't become a rooftop deck.
So, I guess my concern there is it looks like a duck, it cracks like a duck. I, it's, it's not on top of a roof, but it seems to me semantic, so that's a deck, an elevated deck as opposed to a rooftop. I, I think you have the same conditions, and, um, I have that same concern about the, about, uh, the privacy thing that would be addressed if we call it a rooftop deck. I also have a concern, I'll just bring it up now, that, that the neighbor, uh, they saw that it was a deck in the same position, um, with the original drawings. I don't see a letter in here, maybe was it in the original package? That they've, um, um, they have not, I'm thinking they have not seen these revised drawings. So I, I, I have, I, I'm a little concerned still about the privacy thing. I'd like to talk about it some more, but, before we go to that, Lynn's been waiting patiently for quite a while here. Lynn?
Yeah, I'm back to that discussion, 'cause I'm looking at the drawings, the new ones, the A zero-one, and I have to get a magnifying glass out to look at the measurements, but I'm going, basically, from people standing on that deck, anyone above five feet is going to be standing, their heads above the roof level. And that may seem semantic, but that would be annoying to me as a neighbor to see these heads bobbing above roof levels. That, that's as roof deck to me. So I'm kind of with you, Terry. You can argue semantic. So I'm kinda with you, Terry. You can argue semantics, but this really feels like a rooftop.
It does, uh.
So it's my comments, anyway.
Thank you. Kevin?
I'm on the same topic, but, uh, and I do understand the concern about privacy, but I agree with Paul according to our definition of rooftop. It specifically says on top of a roof. So I don't see how we stretch that definition and make this a rooftop, because it does not stand on top of a roof. So I do like Paul's condition to take care of this situation. But, but then going back to Paul Clark's comment, I think his question was, okay, do we sometimes need to require a screening on just the plain deck because of the height of the deck? And that discussion seems to be a little bit separate, because here, I think, is clearly not a rooftop, because there's no structure underneath.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask this question. If, if there was no deck on top of there, and that was just a porch that's, that's keeping the rain off of the entrance, would you call that a roof? Not, I think I would.
Uh, but there is no structure above the concrete, that's it. I mean, no roof for, meaning it's no enclosed thing as just a simple roof, or it's no roof with four walls. So, uh, I don't see how we call it the roof of a building. There's nothing there until we put the deck above it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I can, I'm looking out my window right now, uh, and I can see a deck, uh, that is considerably higher off the ground than what's proposed with this one here. It's just a raised deck. Uh, and on a two-story building, uh, with a 10-foot basement, uh, and you have a deck on your second floor, it's not a rooftop deck, it's just a deck. It's a raised deck, but it's a deck. Uh, if someone was to close that in, then it would become on top, you know, of a room, so it would be a roof. Uh, and we have quite a few of those in Exeter, because my deck is on the second floor of my house, and it's 10 feet off the ground as well. Uh, and I'm not defending what my deck is there for, cause mine is clearly not a rooftop deck. And it's at the rear of the building as opposed to the side. But we've got quite a few already where they actually just have raised decks on two-story buildings. So I think, you know, if I, uh, I could see this easily being argued, uh, to appeal, to argue the definition of rooftop. Uh, and so I think putting the condition in there that if you try to close in underneath it, then it does become a rooftop deck. And it is then subject to those conditions. But we can't make a condition on something that somebody might do. All we can do is put in a condition that restricts certain things.
Uh, Paul Clark?
Uh, thanks, Terry. I, I like what Paul just said is that, uh, I think, uh, we, we need to put a condition is that, uh, if, if at any time that, uh, that, uh, area underneath the deck is to be, um, enclosed, it needs to come back to MPC, because then it does become a rooftop deck. And then, uh, there may be some need for, uh, some privacy screening or something. Uh, so, uh, and, uh, I can testify myself, uh, anytime I have something raised off the ground, I'm, I'm going to use it for some, some other reason other than just, uh, yeah, underneath, yeah. Everybody's looking for storage space. In my case, it was a woodshed.
So how about this, Mr. Chair? And this may satisfy everybody I don't know. Um, and, uh, so, and I wrote it down, but, uh, I'm sure Jan and is gonna try to capture. Is the condition that would say that the MPC does not consider this to be a rooftop deck. However, should the area under the front deck, or the front deck to be a rooftop deck, however, should the area under the front deck, uh, or sorry, the area under the front deck shall not be enclosed without a separate approval from the MPC. And that way, if they go to close it in, it becomes a rooftop deck. And then you tell them, well, you gotta cut your deck back a couple of feet now, because you're now a rooftop deck. Be nice if the applicants were there to understand that, uh, because some people don't understand why we have this concern.
Yeah. Um, so Kevin, th- thanks, Paul. Um, and Jan, did you, uh, catch that wording?
I'm gonna.
We'll come back, we'll come back to it after.
Yeah.
I like Paul's wording for fixing the problem. And Paul, when he looks out his window, is looking at my deck, that's up about 10 feet with nothing underneath it, and it's been that way since 91. Hasn't been enclosed, has no plans of enclosing. And I could step on my deck and look at Paul's deck, uh, which is.
Careful how you say things like that.
And both of us consider them decks, not rooftop decks, according to the definition in, uh, our land use bylaw. So yes, I like Paul's solution.
All right. Uh, Lynn, you okay with that?
I'm still struggling a little bit with it, um, kinda going, so if there was a complaint, like if the letters have gone out and somebody says, no, I don't like that, do we have any latitude in putting screening, I don't care the definition, on something that is staring down somebody's window?
Uh, yes, you do, because it's, if you consider this deck to be a rooftop deck, then it's considered discretionary, and then you can apply conditions. But if, if it stays under the permitted use category, then you can really, you, you can only really put conditions that are outlined in, in the L U B.
Okay.
Did you want me to read back, um, the closet I think I got from Paul? And I'm not sure how, I, I tried to get it accurate. Um, so I've got, the MPC does not consider this to be a rooftop deck. However, the area under the deck shall not be closed in, as this would create a rooftop deck situation. And then I think we should maybe say something after, uh, which requires MPC consideration as a discretionary use, or.
Here's what I wrote and I'm sending to you right now.
Okay.
The MPC does not consider the front deck to be a rooftop deck. Should there be an attempt to close in the space below the deck, a separate approval shall be required.
Okay. Are you emailing that, or did you put that in chat?
I just sent it to you.
Okay, great.
So.
I guess I could have put it in chat.
So you guys that live in Exeter, the, the pictures, the pictures that are in the package, that's the application. Um, on that, uh, I guess it's the south side of the property where that, where the elevated deck is, it's on the south side of the building. There's a, there's a driveway there, and it looks like there's a fence and a bunch of trees. Um, does that provide screening to the next property? Does anybody know?
So that's correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, it is, it does have, uh, a row of, uh, very mature trees there. Uh, but, you know, trees come and go.
Well, yeah.
So, um, it's a, you know, once again, the deck is eight feet off the ground.
Uh, it's nine and a half feet, I think.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. When I, I need Lynn's magnifying glass, then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, if I may interrupt, I'm sorry, um, it, uh, we could maybe clarify this with Leslie, but it looks like, um, the applicant might be in the lobby now. Thank you, Jan.
I don't think we're gonna hold this whole discussion over again. Uh, maybe just explain to him, I guess, Terry, if you want.
Yeah, I'm thinking, uh, I can't see that, uh, Leslie is the applicant there?
Yes, they are. They have just, I have not entered them from the lobby.
Okay.
I see the nine-six now, Terry.
Yeah, okay. Um. I don't know if you guys can hear that. Sorry about the noise.
Sounds like someone's cutting down a tree.
No, I forgot to tell my wife not to run the printer. There you go. Sorry about that. I guess I could have muted it.
You mean you forgot to ask your wife not to run the printer?
Yeah, right. Yeah, maybe that's the problem. Um, so, um, uh, Donna and, and Amerito Biato, you're, you're in the meeting now?
No, I haven't let them in. I was waiting for your word. Sorry.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, then, uh, Leslie, you left me.
Okay.
Is it Mr. and Mrs.? Yeah? Hi, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Biato, are, are you, can you hear us now?
Yes.
All right. So you just got in? You haven't heard any of the previous discussion? Is that correct?
Yes, I just got in, yeah. I just finished, yeah, yeah. Sorry for the delay.
So we've had, uh, quite a long discussion about, um, your revised drawings and, uh, and the, uh, the staff recommendation about that. Um, just briefly, uh, I'll let you know that there's been, uh, some level of concern about the, uh, about the front deck, uh, the elevation of the front deck and the, uh, uh, privacy of the neighbors. Um, right now, the commission, uh, is not considering, or is, is looking at not considering the, uh, elevated deck in the front as a rooftop deck, um, which then makes it a, um, a permitted use and, and, um, there are no further requirements around that. Um, perhaps I could ask you, uh, if, so you got, you got no response to your notification letter to your neighbors on the south side?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, uh, we, we already, um, uh, like, talked to them personally and then, uh, with, with the letter that, uh, that was, uh, that was given to them on each side. And so far, they're saying they're, they're all right with it. So I assume if there's no, like, I've indicated your contact numbers there, where they can submit like any opposition or something, but, uh, yeah, that's, uh, if, if there's any, like, I would like also to confirm now if any of them are having issues with it.
So, so we have not seen any, uh, any responses. Um, is there anything else that you would like to, um, add to the conversation about, um, about, uh, your application and your, uh, new drawings?
Yeah, with the new drawings, that's, that's the, uh, yeah, that's the, the, well, at least as far as we can, we can put effort into it, that's, that's the latest, um, resubmission that we could give.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Mrs. Biato, good morning.
Good morning.
This is Paul Ryan. Uh, do you have any intention of closing in that space under the front deck in the future?
Hmm, no, no.
Okay.
Just a deck.
Thank you.
Um, okay, any other, uh, any other discussion at this point?
Yeah, so the decision would not be, it's not approved, like.
Uh, this is no decision yet. We haven't had a vote. So I think, um, I'm just asking the commissioners if there's, uh, any other discussion.
Okay.
Um, and it doesn't, doesn't sound like there is. And if, uh, Ms. Biato, if you don't have, um, any other point, then at this time, I'll call for a, uh, for a motion, uh, for, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
We have, let's, uh, let's get the final wording on the, um, on the change to the, um, for the recommendation. So we have, we're adding it after number one. Jan?
That's right. New condition, uh, after number one, as per, uh, Paul's wording that he, um, I, I'm, Paul, you did email that, right?
I did, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm just, uh, there it is. Okay. I had to just look for it here. Uh, I have that wording. Uh, the wording is the MPC does not consider the front deck to be a rooftop deck. Should there be an attempt to close in the space below the deck, a separate approval shall be required.
Okay. Um, and then, so we'll, we'll renumber after that. And because we're not considering the rooftop deck, then item 19 of the, of the staff recommendation goes away, right? We'll delete that.
Uh, yeah, uh, sorry, I'm just doing a, a, a paste here of Paul's motion, so that I had it. Um, yes, the, um, in the staff recommendation, we will remove number 19. And number 18 alludes to the rewording of condition, um, oh, no, it doesn't. Sorry, that was road approach, my mistake. Yes, I would suggest that clause number 19 be struck and the new clause be added as a new number two.
And I believe we don't have any other changes.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Paul.
So in condition number one, in bold, it says a deck located above the porch roof. But there's no porch there.
Yeah, that's where I was going before.
So I, I think that should just be struck for, and it's not a porch addition, because they're not adding to the front porch, or building a front porch.
Well, they are building a new front porch. There's no porch now. They wanted a, a new front porch, a new rear porch, and a deck above the front porch.
I don't see that in the drawing A01. Uh, all I see is four posts. So there's a, a separate piece of this, Jan, that I missed completely?
No, um, the application form says, um, they'd like to create a front porch area, a rear porch area, and a deck above the front porch.
So it'll be an unenclosed porch?
Yes.
So maybe we should.
I- is it the fr- is it the front porch, uh, wording that, uh, members don't like?
Well, it's me with just with condition one, where we're saying it's located above a porch roof, but there's no structure underneath it. All it is is just four posts.
Can we change the wording?
You can do whatever you like.
I would say just put in a deck located above the unenclosed porch, period. Take the roof off.
There you go.
Okay, and a second porch addition to the rear of the dwelling as identified in the attached Schedule A. The rest is all okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
I'd like to just clarify that, make sure I got it right. Uh, Jan, can you just tell me the revision to, to item one, the condition one?
Yes, um, the, um, staff recommendation number one, we'll read the same way it is right now, except that at the end of the first line, we're gonna remove the word roof. And not relate to a porch roof, just a roof, or just a porch, I mean.
Right, that's sort of in the middle of the sentence in bold? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, Paul Ryan, you were, uh.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve, Mr. Chair, with, uh, as amended.
Okay, so a motion to approve, um, the amended staff recommendation. Uh, Paul Ryan, do you, uh, sorry, Paul Clark, do you approve of the motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Lynn?
Yes, I'm good now, especially having heard from the applicant, and she's had a conversation with her neighbors. That helps.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Yes.
And Paul Ryan?
Uh, yes, and Jan, can you explain to Mrs. Beto afterwards, uh, waiting period?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
And I approve the motion as well. Uh, Katie, did you catch all that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Mrs. Biato, this, your application's been approved. Uh, thanks for coming on to the, into the meeting today.
Thank you. Nice meeting y'all.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, good morning. You know, the draftsman never really referred to that as a porch.
You know, the draftspun never really referred to that as a porch. In the draw.
I don't see any labels on there at all. And that was kind of where I was going with that, uh, question about the, of being a roof. But we're, we're, we're good here now, so. Let's, uh, that was.
Blazing through it.
For one, correct? That four-two is the updated, uh, map for Deadman's Flats. I don't know if anybody's got any comments on that.
We're still maxed out though, right, Jen?
Yes, we are. There's a waiting list.
How many on the list?
Uh, I think there is like seven or eight. Um, Katie manages it, so she may correct me here, but I think there's around seven or eight.
Okay, so that's.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to stick in one comment concerning the way the package is put together. Is it possible in the future to not have normal-sized pages mixed in with the larger, uh, the larger pages? Because then it makes it very difficult to find a page in between the big pages. And that's why none of us could find a page when Paul Clark was referring to page twenty in the first, at least I was flipping by it when I, or when I flipped the big pages, because the small page was in the middle.
Right, um, absolutely. We can, um, arrange the package any way you'd like. Uh, the reason why the larger pages are in there is because the drawings were so small that we decided to print them on larger paper so you could see them better. Um, would it be, um, acceptable if we just had all the, maybe the long pages together and not have small pa- like the eight and a half by eleven in between the eleven by seventeen sheets? Or do you not want use of?
Uh, that's what I was trying to ask. You keep the big pages, but you do not put small pages in between the big pages. Because I really appreciate it being able to read the diagrams.
Absolutely. We will, uh, make sure that that doesn't happen in future packages.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Jen, another suggestion on that same topic. If, when we put the eleven by seventeen pages in, they're folded in the right way. Um, if we were to put the page number at the right hand, the bottom right, instead of the bottom center, uh, then it would show up on the folded pages.
Okay, page numbering bottom right. Okay. And, um, don't put small pages in between the eleven by seventeen. Got it.
And I was gonna remark, uh, that I appreciate the page numbers. But I thought the package is pretty good.
Oh, I was just gonna say, except for, I don't know how these schedules, um, seeing how there's nobody at the meeting but us. I'm not sure how these, these schedules were numbered properly. And then, I don't know, something happened that the whole box, just the letter C came out, not any of the wording. So I don't know what happened there, but it was correct when, when we, uh, prepared it, but the output, I don't know.
Okay. Well, it's, uh, it's, it's going in the right direction, I think. Okay, so let's go to, uh, five A one. Uh, Jen, whenever you're ready. And you're muted.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Sorry about that. Um, this, uh, this application is submitted by Sean Cockrell. Uh, he is the agent for the landowner, which is a numbered company. Written consent has been provided, uh, by the numbered company, giving Mister Cockrell permission to make the application on behalf of the company. And, uh, within your agenda package, uh, there's corporate information in there on the company and the list of directors, showing that the director who provided the consent for Mister Cockrell does have the authority to do that. This application is for a new single detached dwelling with an attached garage and a suite rough-in only. Uh, the application is also for a height variance. This subject property is located at one twenty-two Rivers Bend Way in the Hamlet of Deadman's Flats. And the property is designated as R one S. The height variance is considered to be discretionary, even though the dwelling is considered to be a permitted use. Um, so the entire application has been referred to the M P C for this decision. The drawings for the proposed dwelling are shown to comply with the M D's land use by law. You might notice that many of the setback distances are shown to be at or very close to the minimum setbacks for the, for the district. A caution has been placed regarding this into the staff recommendation. Members might also notice that the, some of the eaves have been reduced from the normal point six to, um, point four-five, um, on areas where the setbacks are really tight on that side. Um, you should be able to see that in the drawings. The area where the roof, um, exceeds the maximum height is at the back of the dwelling, about the midpoint of the roof structure. The R one S district regulations allow for a maximum height for a dwelling to be ten meters. The proposed dwelling height is shown to be ten point five-five meters. And, um, accordingly, a five point five percent variance is being requested as part of the application. And five point five percent of a variance to that ten meters amounts to point five-five of a meter or one foot eight inches. If the M P C wishes to grant the variance, it does have the ability, um, pursuant to section forty-one point two point two of the land use by law. This section allows M P C the ability to grant up to a ten percent variance. And as, um, we stated, just a five point five is being requested. The neighbors to the subject property were notified and, um, a copy of that notification is in the agenda package along with a map showing which properties were notified of the, the height variance. We received one positive response to that referral, and that is also in your agenda package. On the site plan, um, it was referred to the Director of Operations for comment on the driveway approach with. The, um, Operations Department has, um, approved of that uh, driveway approach with and stamped an approval on to, um, the site plan. And the site plan will form a Schedule B to any decision that you make today. The dwelling drawings are attached and within your agenda package. And these drawings will form part of Schedule A to any decision that you make today. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the dwelling and the suite rough-in with the height variance, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the, um, Development Officer's report. And I will stop there and answer questions.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, Paul Clark?
Thanks, Terry. Uh, Jen, I don't know if you can answer this question, but I think it was a good point brought up in the last application on the height variance, is that it will only have very small part of the roof. Uh, really, they had to have the variance. Uh, so it was a, you know, uh, if that's the same case in this, in this height variance?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, someone just came in the office. What was the question, Paul?
In, uh, the previous application on, uh, that we approved on height variance.
Yeah.
I think one of the considerations we, we had was, uh, the height variance was only a small part of the roof. Is that the case, is in this case?
Yes, it is. And in fact, um, what I'm doing here is drawing U two. There's, there's actually drawing in the agenda package that shows the percentage of the roof that's overheight. And if you go to, um, these are one of the larger eleven by seventeen pullout sizes. Um, if you can pull out drawing, um, A two point five, which is on page fifty, that drawing shows you, uh, the portion of the roof, uh, that is overheight.
I'm trying to get to it. A two point five?
Uh, A two point five, yes, and that's page fifty.
Okay, I got it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Jen, can you stop presenting your screen? Um, you've just given us a double of the meeting.
I see that. What happened? I have no idea what I did. Um, I'm going to close out of one, but I'm worried that that might, I'm not sure, I don't think I was screenshot.
Sorry, can everybody just look at their, um, share screen with an up arrow? If you have a box at the bottom with an X, you need to X it out, because you've been sharing your screen. Yep, there you are. Thank you.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go. All right, that wasn't, okay, that wasn't.
My apologies.
Okay, so, um, to continue, um, did everyone find page fifty? Uh, large pullout drawing A two point five?
Yeah, it's better on the next one.
Okay.
A three one, the next page.
A three point one? Okay, well, whichever one you want to look at's fine. Um, but yes.
So, uh, this, Mister Chair, if I may, a question to, uh, so are we seeing a trend here to just ignore the M D's maximum heights?
Um, no, I think there are certainly many dwellings that get approved that don't have any variances at all, and those you see under item V B on your agenda. Um, but certainly some of these lots are really sloped. Um, they're really angled, and some of them just require some special considerations. But I do agree, um, there seems to be a lot of height variances being requested, but they seem to be fairly slight in most cases. It's just a portion of the roof line, the peak.
Which could have actually been designed to fit underneath our standard, because it's just a prow. So if you change the avenue, reduce the angle, and it could drop down into what our maximum height is. And I'm amazed the people that design these aren't aware of our height restrictions, but anyway.
I think they are, um, but it's whatever the cl- the customer, the client wants. As Murray had said earlier, that he cautioned his clients against requesting this variance. Um, but they wanted to give it a shot.
That is what he said, yes, that's correct. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, thank you. Uh, Paul Clark, you still have your hand up? Do you have something else?
I'm sorry, no, I don't.
Okay.
I'll put my hand up.
Any other discussion? We have a motion then, for staff recommendation.
I'll make a motion, Terry. Accept as recommended.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve staff recommendation. Uh, Paul Clark, do you approve?
I do.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Paul Ryan?
Yes.
And I approve. Uh, Katie, did you catch that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion's carried. So that's five A one. So in five B, we had, um, three applications approved by the Development Officer. Any, uh, questions or comments on those?
No.
No? Okay, we'll accept those for information. We have no subdivision approval applications. We have no lease referrals. Council meeting minutes, any comment? No, we'll accept that for information. Okay, we're done. We did a motion for adjournment.
I move adjournment.
So move.
So, uh, motion to adjourn. Paul Clark, do you approve?
I approve.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Paul Ryan?
Yes.
And me, so the motion to adjourn is carried. Katie, you okay?
Yes, I am, thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Thanks, Terry.